President of State by States. Your visit to our respective states. Honestly speaking, tremendous results. Since extension of office. I the acting president of Brigi. The issue of region came into our system. Though this region. Was met with resistance for some quotas. Of those people who actually do nothing well for us. Your Excellency today. The region who brought into what we are doing. Has brought about the unity we are enjoying as a region. It are several today that will have never been identified. I like. A living example of what we are saying here. Your Excellency. The unity we are enjoying. As a region. Is because. Of this regional system. We can't ignore. Also the numerous achievements of your administration. Your Excellency. Your Excellency. As a region, we look back to where you resume office. Even though. It appear that. You had been the most criticized. Even though it appears that. You have been the most attacked. Even though it appear that you have been the most hated. Among the wise men of this. But your Excellency sir. We have been honest at this moment. When we say. You have achieved more than we have ever expected. Your Excellency, our A P M. So minutes back. The intention of our enemy is to. Bailing from Kenya and go back home. They go to the D N D O S compromise. They go to the East Eastern Network, disorganized. With a lot of prisoners. Either the bullets or the arrests. The movement was then at a point of total collapse. Behold, our Prime Minister surfaced from nowhere. Who saved the struggle. To the point where our enemy showed again. Collided with a finished authority. To detain where he is. And the same intention of our enemy. Came up again because. They intended to collapse Brigi. From the information of Brigi. It has been the nightmare of our enemy. And they intended. To collapse Brigi from their foundations. They intended to make sure that Brigi ceased to exist totally. But glory be to Chukwuku Kabiyama. Who prompted your images. As our A P M today. And we are going to tell you sir. That upholding Brigi. Is the greatest of all achievements you have recorded within the space of one year. To our enemy. One year was enough. To have collapsed the entire system. But to us, it is an achievement on your side. Because in the one year. Our enemy met a rock in your nationality. Who gave no chance for Brigi to collapse.
Regions announced by Biafra. Factor government, namely Northern Region. Southern Region, Eastern Region, which is hosting us today. Western Region and Central Region becomes henceforth. The proper and official. Identity and expression in the Biafra Confederation. The hinterland, coastal land. And the other ways being expressed before now. As regions are mere descriptive expressions. Not proper and official expression. Considering the current situation of division. Conflict, misdirection and sabotage in the Biafra struggle. Caused by the agent of subtlety and deception. Ngosi Orabweze. The Biafra de facto government. Carefully appointed and authorized only 12 man committee. Mostly administrators. Who looked into the partitioning of the already existing 40 states. Into five regions through summit. The committee members and administrators of. Enugu State. Omambala State. Etayanang State. Icembas State. Iwani State. Akpake Oro State. Alanso State. Olu State, Eboni State. Minister of Interior. Secretary of State. And Chairman of Defense Chiefs. They held a series of meetings on various dates. And at some point appointed five man special committee. For the final submission and review of partitioning suggestions. Or proposals from the general committee members. Of the announced map of. Five regions and 40 states of Biafra Confederation. With eight states for each region. We are not fighting for regions. Same way we are not fighting for states. But we are only fighting for the great Biafra Confederation. That encompasses both the regions and the states. Using four cardinal points. Some states are located in more than one region. But can only belong to one region. And by the Biafra government's order and policy of equal national representation. Or some states cardinal points. Location were adjusted to accommodate the necessary requirement of. Eight state for each region, all connected by land. Therefore, it is wise and important for all Biafrans to abide. By the decision of Biafra de facto government. As future structural amendment exists. Not only for the regions but also for the states, counties. And wards in freedom. Right now, Biafra is in struggle and everything must not be perfect. So today we are being hosted. By the Eastern Region of the Biafra Confederation. Comprising eight states. Namely. Idun Ibon State. Apakip Oro State. Abba State. Kalaba State. Eda State. Ikam State. Eboni State. And Ahauku State. So there's no much history to talk about. The regions or the Eastern Region which is hosting us today. Everything began the day we created the states, all the regions. Thank you so much for listening, great Biafrans. I yield my mic from here.
Okay, thank you so much C O A for this. Wonderful presentation on the other Sunday. We'll go to item number five. Okay. Please C O A moderate the program over to you. C O A. C O A, can you hear me? I can hear you now. I say you should moderate the program so.
Okay.
From the number five.
Alright. Alright, so. We move to. The next item. In the agenda. Excuse me. Okay. We proceed. We go to number five. The presentation of the traditional Kola Not. And on this, I will invite. The admin of Idun Ibon State. To come and do the presentation. Or his representative.
Yes. Biafrans all for the world greeting from here. I want to present. The Kola Not, it is our tradition, our Eastern. And even my. State. Every state. Want me to use. Because it was a traditional. Something.
Break the Kola. Are we not going to break the Kola? So honourable.
Yes.
Break the Kola well so that we can start.
I I do. I break the Kola not. This Kola Not. I kiss. So each state to come and pick the Kola Not. Take it. In a. Sum of. Sixty thousand a year. Take the Kola Not. We are taking the Kola Not to run out. So everyone on this world. To raise your hands. As I see. That table is very rich. So let's see, hands up, hand up. Alright, item. Yes, this is. Three.
C O A, push out the vice by state.
Okay, she goes, it's the first. Alright. Okay. Yeah, let us follow the. That. Relation. Taking of the Kola Not. We want first for. Of the Eastern. Eastern region. To take the lead before we go to the. What is it? The Eastern John is. Hosting us, so they will have to take lead. So on behalf of our Opu State. We are taking. Eight thousand a year. Or Opu State taking the Kola Not. With um three thousand a year. Maybe I should be playing the Eastern region. Yes. One. Yes, so. I call on Idun with fifty thousand a year. I was taking with thirty thousand a year. I call on Apakip Oro. Apakip Oro admin of state. Will you. Come and pick the Kola. So to move on. Apakip Oro. For anyone. From Apakip Oro. From state. Is. Can pick the Kola. On behalf of no domain, please. I don't know who is Abba admin. I'm coming to represent. I'm not one of the officers, but I cannot sit down here. Still the corner, I still quiet. And. And I'm taking this opportunity to call those. Who are the decision makers of the. Who are. Charity. Abba states, they come because Abba is like the end. All the. Is the address. Hadly here. Abba should block. Let them tell you what others doing. On behalf of, on behalf of Abba, I will give thirty. To pick kola. And then because I will be going to do my own business. I will begin. Twenty game on behalf of my family and. I'll begin twenty game, that is making all the kola fifteen. Tomorrow I will send it to Minister of.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, that's great. A lot of fat that. Did not let your state down. Every state citizen, it is your duty. In part of this to represent your state. If your admin is not up, and you can't stop up and be really needful. So. Appreciate. For. You know, the responsibility. Three. Go ahead, put yourself. I tell, this is this right, Alice. Speak, we are taking. The kola, we have enough kola on the table. And the kola has been broken for our service. Everyone is eligible to take kola. Even if you're a woman, there's other than. You can take. If you look very closely at table of dating, there are many of. Which you can take anything just from the table of the state. So they must maybe happen. Without delay. I have big item. This is. Because.
Am I coming up loud, please?
So you are coming.
Okay. Even though I am having network issues tonight. But nevertheless, people can remain our side.
Okay. Seems like.
Are we here? Ah. On behalf of the people of. That I am representing. I don't know where I come from. At all at all. Hello, I.
You are cannot repeat your statement for us again. Charlie, it seems I lost him again. I talk so bad. Okay.
Now, I for Ecom states. So he.
Clear. For the. Yeah, it's go ahead, go ahead now. You are clear.
Okay. Today. As deputy head of the region. And also Ecom state representative. Are we. The equal people who were represented in the east here. We are. The kola not. With a total sum of. Four hundred and ninety nine thousand euro from Ecom. Of this.
Honorable. We have police here on this. Do more. Yeah. Yeah. Arrested for any one.
They have ordered other. Job, we are before coming to this. My name is Honorable God. The Ecom state has the straight balls. I was. As the deputy head of. He talking the. Out. With. Some of nine. Without. Of four hundred and ninety nine thousand a day. From here. With the effect.
Wow. That is wonderful. Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Please.
Okay. And please, if you finish speaking, you put down your hand. So that we can know that you are done. Okay? Otherwise.
For now, you should. Those. Put it on and call the state first. Let them.
You know, I will by their hands. Okay? So if you are coming, make sure that you are coming for your state or on behalf of your state for now. You can as well. For yourself. Then um. We move to other states. Other state admin. Or representative. Or. Um. Okay. Begin New York. Let me take the hands that I'm seeing on the screen. Five.
Hello, Biakas.
Hello, welcome.
I read my heart because that's um. A correction that was supposedly made. So you did not correct Ecom admin. You said it, you realize he made a mistake and you needed to correct him, but you didn't. Um, this is.
What I tell you.
For.
This meeting is being recorded.
Our rule states that. If you want to mention your donation. Is either a J. If you raise your hand. To speak, when you finish, you lower your hand. If you don't. That's a penalty for you. So. Everybody should take that into their brain and the admins. At home, you teach your members. Because we are getting ready to move into our new nation and we are not going with old clothes and old behavior. We have rules and regulations and we obey rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Begin New York. And so if you are raising your hand. You are going to take kola. For your state. Either as a citizen. As an admin or a representative. You can as well take for yourself after you have taken kola for your state. Both men and women are welcome. If you look at our table of the meeting, it is so rich with many items. So. You can make a choice there. So I think um Okudle somewhere else. Your hands are up. Over you. Okudle is summer, your hand is up.
Okay, you know.
It seems like Okudle is summer has disappeared, so we move to Victor. Okay. Victor Nusso. Go ahead and speak. Victor Nusso, over to you.
She's mic.
Am I audible, am I coming out?
You can raise your voice a bit.
Alright.
Okay.
Well, if I audible. I just want to use this opportunity to say. Uh, yeah, France. I believe we are over sixty five host are here right now and many will be joining. If you are listening to my voice right now, you can understand that we are in this serious business.
Yes.
So if you think that you will come here and just stay on the discussion and occupy the host business for that reason, you are. You are doing yourself. Many are called, you are choosing. We are fighting for our freedom. With most facts. No sleeping. Mazinamikam is dead. Anyway, I will not waste much of our time. So I'm encouraging each and every one of us that are here, raise up your hands, raise up your hands and keep whatever you have. I'm going to support right now. I'm from all the states, I'm a citizen of the state if you are back. I'm going to support my states for now, some of fifty thousand a day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I like what he said. Raise your hand. And do the niffo, that's why we are here. Everything we are doing is towards the promotion and restoration of the. Collectively. So if you are here with us, it is your duty to participate. In what we are doing. Do not only be.
Sir, go ahead and call the states as you have called Edda. Please, please, I hope you are here.
Yes, I, he's treating those who raise hand, let them address.
For now, hands should hold on, let all the states run their decision before their hand will come to general support.
Okay, um, we move to it.
Yeah, hold on, yeah, hold on, let me take the mind. Thank you, Bea France. It is very important that. The beginners of your base, when your state is called, you'll do the niffo to give a. A supportive, encouraging backup. You know, challenges we are having is as some of our home base. Have been discouraged with some other competitive challenge facing with Tingo's or a busy team. And it's affecting them, which caused a lot of states suffering quashoko in gathering their members. However, it is the duty of the people living abroad to always with time. Periodically visit your state, identify with the administrators, give them motivative encouragement. Motivate them by giving them some backup arrangements and guidelines on how the state will be functioning. So that in the time of this gathering, you will not be disappointed that your state is called. And became as though there is no existed being in that state where you are doing very well, living comfortable in another man's country. While we have struggled to seek on how we can better our country so that we can go home. And enjoy the natural and the manmade amenities. Uh, in the course of that, um. I'll be supporting Edda state, although I've been trying to work. In synergy with the some administrators, also even taking the lead to seek if I can hold the meeting with Edda state. But the challenge is beyond control. When our brother here, good guy was speaking, I told him I was in communication with Edda state admin. He even sent me a screenshot, the challenge is facing to go in in the forum. But in any case, I've been supporting on behalf of Edda state. With some of thirty thousand a day to ensure that the name of Edda did not be called and in a waste. I also seek in the audience and the. To every Edda being, wherever you are. Do justice to that and bring in your one AJ to help in a long way to represent us uniformly. And also support the cause of Bea France through the.
Thank you. So we move to Kalabastet. Admin of Kalabastet. Or a representative or a citizen of Kalabastet. It's over to you. And you know, honorable Minister of Interior, their names did not bear their states. We'll be picking the hand.
Like like Kalaba, you can leave Kalaba and go to other state now. Call other state.
Okay, Ecom state have spoken, then Eboni state.
Okay, it's my turn.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone. In this. Town hall meeting, it's a great privilege to all of us to gather here again. And um. We are making progress. And Eboni state is going to present the little what we have. COA, sorry, Minister of Information, I think there's something I said to you. I don't know if you can play that music to us, Minister of Information.
Honorable, we are still on the picking of kola.
Uh, the Eboni is presenting, this is a part of this that they want to use to present their kola.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright, alright sir, thank you.
Ebony State have a special number.
Okay. Alright, we will come back to Ebony State when they are ready.
Please address Mongoba, so that you have been raising hand for a long time.
And that's the way and I want to call it. So Mongoba, over to you. Mongoba, over to you, your hand is up. I'm seeing the hands. Okay, am I coming out? Yes, you are coming out.
Yeah, because I'm trying to move things but it's not working. Uh, good evening, my ministers in the house.
Good evening.
Uh, special greetings to my, and our information, Mr. Maysana Habara. Welcome to Eastan Region of Biafra Land. Devo, thank you, we are seeing you.
Thank you.
Devo from here.
Devo.
Um, on behalf of my notary, John Biafra Land, I'm supporting fifty thousand AJ to Eastan.
Yeah.
Region of Biafra Land, thank you, Devo.
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 Good evening all.
Thank you.
Good evening all.
Go ahead, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm Okudle Somwala from Ihoronha State. The financial director, on behalf of Ihoronha State, I am giving five thousand AJ.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ihoronha State, okay.
We move to Ochenduwa Biafra.
Is anybody writing this down? Or do you need help? Is anybody writing it down? These amounts.
Someone should be writing it.
Okay.
Honorable Interior.
Yes. I think, Soni, are you, are you ready?
No, that's not it.
Interior, Interior, I asking you, anybody body, it's been appointed to write it down.
Okay, 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 no.
Someone is writing.
Sis, thank you, you can go on.
Okay.
Ebony State is in that.
Let me get.
Sis, thank you.
My financial director is writing down.
Sis, thank you, you can do also.
Not problem, I'll get them. Okay. Okay. Minister Ma. Yes, they did not, they are supposed, the people organizing, they should have realized that they need to keep a record of this.
They are doing that, they are doing that.
Yeah, but it wasn't, what happened to those that when, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten donations already. Do you have the records?
We have records.
Okay, alright.
Soni, you can go ahead and play for us, Soni, later, Boni, just come on stage.
I think when Soni is ready, he will let us know.
Okay, we can go to just move on. Whenever he's ready, he will come and play for us. So I'm going to call all, I'll call Ebony, based on how we structure our state. I call upon, uh, Easy Region. I can come up and announce the donation that all the countries donated. Easy Region, over to you.
What's the name of the Easy Region?
Um, I think Frank. Frank, are you here?
He may not be here with Frank as a name.
Okay.
That's Easy Region here, who is a co-host.
Okay.
But he's muted, he or she is muted.
I'm mute, please. Easy Regions, open their mic. Then if there is regions. If there is. Is it coming out?
He's not speaking yet.
Okay, I have a network, so I call up. I call Equo Region, Equo Region, over to you.
Hello, can I hear you?
Yeah, we can hear you. Okay, equal hold on, listen, equal hold on.
This is Easy Region, it's Easy Region.
They cannot interrupt you, they cannot interrupt you.
Everyone, can you hear me? This is Easy Region.
We can hear you, you gotta hold on.
Okay, greeting to our APM and the Eastern Region Admin. And as well, Ebony State Admin, I hereby represent Easy Region. Based on the donation and the kola notes, I start by the country. You know, the country is hereby pledged one hundred and fifty AJ.
One hundred and fifty.
Let's, yes, one hundred and fifty AJ. Let's, Ebony County pledged one hundred and fifty AJ. Let's, in this country, one hundred and fifty AJ. Let's, Ekumene County, one hundred and twenty AJ. Let's, Ibergue County, one hundred and thirty AJ. To support the movement of the Eastern Region and the Dessa Respiration at large.
Thank you.
Does not have for Easy.
What's the total?
The total?
To be seventy.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Thank you so much, Easy County for.
It's seven hundred thousand AJ.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you so much, Easy County, for this wonderful presentation.
Seven hundred thousand AJ, seven hundred thousand AJ.
Thank you so much.
Darlo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, Easy Region, for this wonderful presentation. We are looking forward also to call Equo Region. Equo Region, the floor is open, over to you, sir.
Good evening, everybody in the house.
Welcome.
Good evening. Yes, I represented the Equo Region as Ebony is being structured. Here from the countries, according to the countries, we have Alike County, Eighty-seven thousand four hundred AJ. Ameku County, sixty thousand AJ. Inimeku County, one hundred forty-three thousand AJ. Ekomaka County, one hundred thousand AJ. Etarak County, it's eight thousand AJ. Making total of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand AJ. This our little contribution to support our chief admin, who know how to play the game best, with the name of the loving glory, by this mighty name of Jesus.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Equo Region for this wonderful presentation. Permit me to call Eza Region to come on stage. Eza Region, over to you. Eza Region.
Greetings. Greetings, everyone.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I thank you all. May God bless all of you.
Bless you too.
According to Eza Region donation, we donated according to counties. Ameka County donated seventy-three thousand five hundred AJ. Umezako County donated one hundred and ten thousand four hundred AJ. Umezaloris County donated one hundred and fourteen thousand AJ. Idembia County donated one hundred and forty-one thousand AJ. Oboji County donated one hundred and ten thousand AJ. Total is six hundred and eleven thousand four hundred. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Eza Region for this great achievement. May Elohim guide you guys. As I'm talking to you now, all the three corner of the regions of Ebony States, there are numbers up to hundred and something people gathering together and listening to this program. Permit me also to call what we call our network gadgets. According to the structure that we place in Ebony, which could not allow our enemies to break Ebony. By our parliaments. We have Saint Theresa Parliament donated thirty thousand AJ. We have Onneke Parliament, twenty thousand AJ. We have Equo Parliament, thirty thousand AJ. We have Onnebuonie Parliament, twenty thousand AJ. We have Isheka Parliament, twenty thousand AJ. Total of one hundred and twenty thousand AJ. Um, I want to use this opportunity also to appreciate the individuals who supported this town hall meeting, which I may not call all their names, but the total figure of the individuals who donated, the total amount is eighty-five AJ. And we are looking forward to make more progress in this journey.
Eighty-five.
May Elohim protect and guys, all of us. So, um, this is what Ebony have for now here. We will come back again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My mic is. My mic is dead.
Yes, this is what Ebony has to present to you guys. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Ebony State. That was awesome. Alright, fellow Biafrans, we are still on the, we are still picking the kola. So all the states in the Eastern Region are picking kola except Akikorong State. Admins, any official or citizen, you can raise your hand and represent your state. And I have a hand here, Akajako, Noba, over to you.
Thank you, CO. Yeah, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Yeah, good day, fellow Biafrans, please permit me to stand on the decision protocols. Yeah, I already made my personal donation to COA, but I want to support my states, state admin, Edda State with a sum of twenty thousand AJ. I will see you tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Support your state, that is where you are. So the floor is open, the picking of the kola, everyone must participate in it. Look at the table, it is very rich. Respect the table by picking one, at least one thing to nourish your body from the table. We want to see hands up before we move to the next item on the agenda. Alright, Onyeze, Ebony State Admin, over to you.
Thank you, my brother, thank you. Good evening, everyone, lovers of freedom. I am Onyeze from Ebony State. I am picking the kola with a sum of five thousand AJ. And using this opportunity at the same time to invite all Biafrans to the Central Region Meeting, which will be coming up on the twenty-third, which is next Sunday. Thank you and God bless you.
God bless you.
Thank you, Onyeze, Ebony State, five thousand.
Yes, so Victor Nusso again, your hand is up. Over to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Onyeze, bring down your hand.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to use this opportunity to call on my brothers and sisters, especially in Portugal. Portugal is not just a small. Portugal is not just a small country. We know we are few in Portugal. But I know that we have more and more Biafrans in Portugal. The reason why I'm going to use this video to extend this message to all Biafrans in Portugal. If you are sleeping, it's time for you to wake up. Uh with all due respect, I am representing Portugal. I am the one of the, I am the representative of Portugal. And without wasting much of our time, uh I'm going to support from my own state. Which I am my own country. I'm going to support with fifty AJ. But I'm using this opportunity to let her know that I cannot do it enough. Because I need your support, we need your support, just like every other. If I am not here. Then who will be? You, I, you must be. I am a human. We are all Biafrans, nobody is bigger than you. This is the right time to key in for what we are. If fight for freedom, stop giving, what is taking, you can see. I'm not saying none of us here either. I will not waste much of our time. I've given myself. But this is a team of collective efforts. It's not for one person. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you. Yes, fellow Biafrans, look at the table of our meeting, the kola knot, pieces of kola knot, there are too many. There are over eighty million pieces of kola knot. Enough to go around the entire forty states of Biafra. So we need to bring it down to zero. So we need more hands up. Over to you, United Kingdom. Victor.
COA, that's a violation.
Mm hmm.
Um Nanso, you finished talking and you did not bring down your hand. So you are attracted a fine. Pay your ticket.
Alright, uh it's very, very important to respect the law and respect the the rules. So I'm going to uh object to the fine with five AJ. Thank you.
Thank you. You're a good Biafran.
Yes.
Now we have some hands. So let us take them please without delay. United Kingdom, over to you.
Okay, so are we, we're now uh general taking of kola not?
Yes, general taking of kola not. For your state.
Oh, okay. So I'm all those states. Alright, so I'm on behalf of our law. Uh I will take uh with hundred thousand AJ. Yeah, for status. So I'll write it for myself and remit it to COA. Yeah, immediately. Alright, so all those states, hundred thousand AJ. Okay.
Wow.
Alright. Thank you, Uncle.
Thank you. Alright, are you done?
Uh yep.
Your hand is still up. Is that a thumb up?
No, she's not thumb up. She knows she break the rule, she pay the fine.
Okay, okay, okay. So Techno, come on twelve. Over to you.
Hello.
Hmm.
Greetings.
Biafrans, I greet you.
Welcome.
Yeah, I'm from our Huku State. Um supporting my representative. Pick the kola knot with the sum of thirty thousand AJ.
Okay.
So that is a good everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Techno, come on twelve. Are you in the Huku State platform?
Yes. Yes, but I cannot unmute my phone and uh you know what, we are battling here in our Huku. So that's why we are just uh seems as if we are not uh doing something, I suppose. But we are getting something on the ground right now.
Okay, go to the Huku platform. Under Brighi, drop me a message there. You will search for COA. Leave a message for me. Okay?
Okay.
Alright, don't worry about what they're not doing. You're not defeated.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so need more hands up. To take more of the kola knot. And we have maybe from uh Lanzo State, over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Yeah, enjoy. Thank you so much. I want to take the opportunity to thank our uh APM. APM, welcome to Eastern Region. Uh greeting to all the Brighi cabinet that are here present. Thank you so much. We are seeing all the, all your handwork. Uh explaining out. Even the blind can testify that. So without taking our time, on behalf of uh Lanzo State. I'm picking a kola with the sum of ten thousand AJ. Thank you so much. We move.
We move. Thank you, Alanso. And I've written it down.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, Alanso. We need more hands up. We need more hands up to take the kola. Remember that we are in the Eastern Region. Of Biafra Confederation Town Hall Meeting. You know what it represents? It is the very place that the sun rises. So it is over to you to make the sun that is rising shine from this. Alright, Nama, watching again, over.
They won't know.
They will.
They will be the most important APM. APM this regional town town hall meeting. It's a wonderful thing that they. I've gained more experience. I've learned a lot on this town hall meeting. I thank uh the board that bring the idea. At this, it have bring, it have begin to resurrect counties. So I'm happy and I pray that it will continue like this. On behalf of Alu State. I'm uh picking the kola with ten thousand AJ. They won.
They will, Nama.
Mama.
Alu do, ten thousand AJ. Okay. Thank you, Nama. Done, uh everything I've done.
Bless you. Alright, keep making it happen. While they're picking the kola. We are about sixty-five here in the Zoom. Everyone in the Zoom needs to take kola knot and also take away. You eat in and you take away. It is allowed. The table is so rich. Don't go away tonight with kola knot. It is very, very important. Back to the meeting, respect the tradition. Remember, it is called traditional kola. So we are doing it traditionally. Respect your traditions. We are picking kola knot. I need to see hands up, please. Honorable Biafrans, we need to see hands up. Alright, Duzia, over to you. Duzia, go ahead.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, Martin Prime Minister. Uh good evening, the Honorable Minister of Information and Communication. The Huku government, our time, Mazzanai Parawa. The Undeputable Minister of Information and Communication. It is pathetic for the enemies. And those who want to make freedom fighting as the occupation and the profession. That it's only two men. That hold them, hold the rest. And never to rise again. I salute Martin Prime Minister. I salute the Honorable Minister of Communication. I salute the leadership of the Biafran, the Fatoga, the home lands, of which so many of them are represented here. From the Secretary of States, my COA, the Minister of Interior, I'm self organized. And all admins and county admins, district mayors, every one of you. You made it happen and each day we will grow. The number we are here today or tomorrow, we are in our counties and various. Just these districts and states cannot determine how we shall be before the end of. It's all about projections in a mathematical way. So fellow Biafrans from all over the world, depending on time zones, wherever you are. Doing this Zoom meeting from. You can find, you can attest yourself that this is not uh a monogamie as usual. Where you have town hall meetings in the US, in Texas, in California, other states, in Germany, you could eat. And you will wear your shaggo to display your your regalia there, but this idea you is hiding your stupidity. This is a time to flush out our stupidity. And taking in the reserve of hours. This is not time for political correctness. It is not time to speak Queen English. It is not time to please anybody. This is a time to displease everybody. I'm gonna show you. You please the spirit of Biafra, regardless of who is involved.
Yes, sir.
She used his father's money to defend the nation. Somebody had made fortunes of it, became millionaire even after the war. In the same sense, the misled leader of the Najadetan uh um emancipation movement meant. Chiefs, Asari dot com, put his life on the verge. And some idiots still come up and made a fortune from it. No matter what Asari has today, it's just a pain of what he's supposed to have. Some people use it as a business on airlines and other businesses. How can you be profiting from your own freedom? How? Somebody else wants to still divide into fracas into fractious processes. I will salute the land of the rising sun in the Biafra land, which is the eastern part of the Biafra region. I will salute the executives and all who made it possible for us to gather here today. Yes, initially when the issue of regional government came up, regional structure. They kicked that, they wrote to our Prime Minister in Finland to assert his uh position on the regional structure. But you know what? Biafra is a moving trend.
Yes.
No one can stop us. Cause whatever good, I reminded our Prime Minister. Sometimes I said, I said, you told us that. Do not stop this system that works. And he agreed with me. Yes. I said, okay, stay aside. Don't interrupt the system that it works. For now. Okay, Chuku system is the system that it works. Take a time. Which I say, Chuku karma, custom is the best. And now we have Okay Chuku in our midst. What is you guys problem? The Chuku that is, that karma is not in our midst. Do you want to kill your red maker? He will kill his red maker, kill his this. And my salute goes to Eboni State, the most structured state in the entire Biafra land. I want to ask them, yes. I am stateless, but I copy states. But there are many Eboni states. And I was a part of it with that indestructibility. With the uh. Um uh formidableness. With the sum of twenty thousand AJ. Yeah, it's the admin. The admin is so much in his correct positions. That's no admin that live now in this minute. That challenge his structure. And the challenge I'm putting to all the five regions of Biafra. All the original heads. This is a challenge to you. Replicate Eboni State. Replicate the state of Eboni under the leadership of a zero minister. Is a man that know how to do. My respect to you, sir. Then I want to remind fellow Biafrans all over the world. That the destiny of Biafra is not in any man's hands. It is in the hand of the Almighty, Chukwueka Biam. To him who give gifts. And to him who validate gifts. He, it is, there is one thing to to be given gifts. And there's nothing for the person that give you the gift of validate, they give that gift to you. Don't behave as you have known. Your professorship, your doctorship, you have a master's degree, you have a bachelor's degree, HND, NIA, NCE. And whatever cannot justify your trajectory of progress in life. What justifies it is your, or continue to, you say you must be dedicated and applied, self-discipline. In this, I've seen in this our God's time, Okay Chukunkere. And let me remind the Biafrans that since the mona uh uh since since the inception of this struggle. I have never joined left wing. Anywhere success goes, that is the right direction.
Yes, sir.
I cannot start naming them. From the time of Uchemofor having issue with Imamazum. I was in the forefront. I was in the meeting with Uchemofor, I was in meeting with Imamazum. We know what we did. I choose the right path. Uchemofor was used by God to stood against these monsters. At the point, Uchemofor started misbehaving. There was another right wing that he created that betrayed him, that gave birth to Chinasamuru. Uchemofor created with a wing that betrayed him himself. And when our Prime Minister came on board, as a new person in the struggle, who joined in two twenty nineteen, we guided him. With every wisdom that is in us. And he never made a mistake. And he chose wisely. Even in his choosing, there are three truths among him. Like the 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 former Minister of Defense, like uh uh his COS, that he finished the left wing in his group. Today they are separated. And we are left with one singular individual called God's time, Okay Chukunkere. And then they go, Okay Chukuka follow God's time. And your time shall meet you. This is my advice to all admins. Go back to work. It's time to work. And any admin that is not working, that is therefore gossiping will be removed outrightly without notice. It does not matter who you are. If we are five states, let's remain five states. If a ten states, we remain ten states. But well-functioned and formidable states. Thank you, Martin Prime Minister, thank you, myself, thank you, everyone, cautious people within the Zoom. I need my mic.
There were. There were.
Oh, sir, thank you.
Okay. Alright, we are. We are still picking kula. As I always say. If you take a look at our table of the meeting. There's enough. There to go around. We don't have one and one who have not. We have African. And I have something like. Yams that are roasted. Wabo Saji. We have Angara. Please, Biafrans, let us make this occasion memorable indeed. By. By the foreign in the table of the meeting. Indeed, for all of us. So we want to see how more hands up before we move to the next item on agenda. We want to see more hands. More hands up. Okay, Reg and Furi. Over to you, Wachinake. Reg.
Okay, Udewo Wachinake. Thank you very much, Mod.
Greetings to you, Biafrans, out of the world. Greetings to you, my honorable Minister of, uh, of, of Information. Honorable Sony Aparawa. The Okoko Dem of our days. The best information, uh, minister that any nation will have. And we'll just go to sleep, go and rest. Thank you very much, I appreciate everything you agree for us. Greetings to my honorable Minister, uh, my honorable APM, His Excellency, Okechukwu Kere. Greetings to all our leaders from. Time past, the deserved representative, to all the cabinet ministers of the Biafa Republic Government in Gaza, you are the best. Like I told you, you are not getting your flowers now, but the best flower you are going to get is the freedom of Biafra, the freedom of the people. Um. From greetings to all the military, the Biafa Defense Forces, from the highest to the lowest. These are the men and women that are defending our babies, women and children, our civilian populations, especially the Christians. Upon this genocide have been declared. Greetings to you, Biafa Defense Forces. And all the international community that are speaking about the plight of Christians and of Biafrans. But I want to say thank you so much. Uh, representing from Isoko, Urubu State of Biafra. Uh, I'll be supporting today's fundraising for the defense of babies, women and children and the freedom of Biafra with a sum of. Uh, two thousand AJ. And, uh, yes, and I also want to let our people know that. Uh, freedom is our right. Freedom is your right, freedom is my right, that's why I will sign up by saying.
Get up, stand up.
Yes, sir.
Stand up for your right. Get up, stand up. Biafrans, don't give up, Biafrans. Just get up, stand up. Stand up for your right. Biafrans, get up, stand up. Don't give up, Biafrans. Don't give up, Biafrans. We will never give up the fight. We will never give up. Biafrans. We will never give up life. We will never give up a freedom. We will never give up a culture. Don't give up, Biafrans, rise up, don't give up, Biafrans. Wake up. Isoko, wake up. People, wake up. Biafrans, wake up. Get up, get up, get up, get up. Get up, get up, get up now. Don't give up, Biafrans. Don't give up, Biafrans. We will never give up our lives. We will never give up a culture. Okay, Biafrans, thank you very much, I need my mic. Thank you.
Reg.
You, donation. Alright, Reg and Furi, you didn't allow. You can re, make your fundraising, but remember that we are picking kula. Alright, we move to Ochendu, Wabiafra. Ochendu, Wabiafra, Ochendu, over to you. Ochendu, you have raised your hand before. We called you, but you didn't speak. Now you are not speaking again. Alright, we move to James Adeno African Rap, Honorable. Over to you, sir.
Yes, a very good evening. Eastern Region Biafran.
Good evening.
Appreciate you.
Good evening.
Somehow, we're organized to bring our people together. Biafu, everyone of us, that freedom that we desire so much. Um, I appreciate our APM. Our Information Minister. And every cabinet member, Honorable, and indeed, the whole of Biafra. I appreciate you all. I also appreciate our, uh, Minister of Success that just spoke. And I thank him very much for not standing on the left wing. And I want to use this opportunity to also tell. Biafrans all over the world. Don't ever find yourself in the left wing. Always follow where the light is shining. And the light is where I stand. I, I want to pick, uh, that's, uh, what the table that our COS is talking about. There is the particular meal I like. There's a lot of times in Bongo, I call Bongo, that's ex-country. Ex, ex-Nigeria. There is a particular thing, is some, that's. First, you understand it, is some, that is some, that is, that's what you normally saw. That is the one I am picking now. And I'm picking it with twenty AJ. Just that one. I'm not great, just one, it's long time I just studied and I am picking it now directly from that table. And I'm taking it now.
Even if.
Thank you.
It, it is enough to go around as many, okay? Devil. Please, the table is already. You.
Greetings, greetings, my ministers. Greetings. Um, I'm so sorry, I was trying to mute myself, but it was not going through, but thank God I'm able to. I hope I'm being heard.
Yes, you are.
Okay, uh, um, good afternoon, my APM, Mazie Okechukukere. I really thank God for your life, for what God is using you to do. And I also thank, uh, our Minister of Information. Chief Sony Aparawa. You are indeed God-sent to this, uh, 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 generation. And I also thank all the ministers who are doing one or two things to make sure that we keep this movement going. May Chukwukikabian will continue to bless each and every one of you. And the donors, every one of you who are supporting in one way or the other financially. Or whatever you're doing to make sure this, uh, cause is moving forward. It's only God that will reward each and every one of us, and I believe that the only reward God will reward us is Biafra. And nothing else. So I'm using this medium to also, um, I think one of my brother from other states. Has, um, picked the kula nod, I also want to add to what he contributed. With the sum of fifty AJ. May God bless us. Very much. And we move to MLK Rap, Briggy. Maz MLK, over to you, sir.
Alright, thank you, thank you, uh, COA. Um, thank you very much. I also thank everyone that. Everyone that has contributed to, uh. To make this. I'm having trouble, um, opening my, uh. Okay, there we go, wait a minute, I thought it did. One, one moment, please, one moment. Yeah, the, yes, sir, thank you, sir, thank you, my Minister of Information. So, yeah, I, I am, I give a lot of credit to the ministers. Uh, and the, the Fatah, uh, 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 the state, uh, representatives who are, who. Of eastern region of Biafran. Who have, uh, you know. Come together to, uh, make this a success. I also greet my, uh. Acting Prime Minister. Uh, His Excellency, Honorable Oke. Okay. That is the opportunity also to, uh, greet, uh. Our BDF. You know, our BDF, they are the backbone. Of this struggle. In fact, they are at the tip of the spear. So I, I duff my hat to them. I also. Thank all the ministers in the house. Uh, and those that have spoken, especially, uh. A chairman of the Defense Council. Uh, Honorable Success. I thank our, uh.
Okay.
Past leaders.
Yeah.
I thank our past leaders. Uh. Generals, uh, Effiong and Ojuwu. Uh. It is now that we realize what they were going through. Many of us had no clue what those two went through. So it's coming to light. What they had to put up with. And I'm grateful to their contribution. Also. On the same note, uh, congratulate and thank Mazie. Nam dekanu, onyendu. Who I believe. From day one that this is our Daniel in the lion's den. Uh. I knew that it wasn't going to be easy for the zoo. To carry out what they want to do. But again, I stay in prayer. And I stay in prayer. And I'm thankful that the Most High has kept him. Also, thank you Most High for our Prime Minister. His Excellency, Honorable Simon Ekma. Uh. Who is being persecuted in Finland. Uh, and I'm convinced now that Finland is, is. Is now shaking, also in panic, I may say. Uh, you see, uh, we've come at a point where, you know, we, we say we crossed the Rubicon. Well, we have. Yes, we have. And when you cross the Rubicon, you know, usually what the next thing that happens is that you take. You take down whatever led you to cross it, you, you take down the bridge, you take down, if it's a rope, you take it down, you bring it down, everything. In that sense, we can go back. So we, we are on a determined and serious journey. Uh, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that. We are close to our destination. And, um. The closer we get. The more elusive it will appear. But that's usually how it is. Uh, some people will continue to, to mark us. Even when the whole world is talking about us. If any of us look back, say like, as a four, five years ago. We, we, we struggled to get the world to listen, to hear us. Where now. Uh. We are, we are no longer in the, in the, in the shades. You know, and the world knows exactly what's happening regardless of all the lies. The, the zoo country. Is trying to sell. So I thank. All those who have persevered. And remain steadfast in this struggle. And I encourage you. To encourage others you come across. To join us. Because let me tell you. Uh, this freedom. Is intoxicating, you will find out. When we get there. So I would like to pick, uh, one of these, uh, they look like garden eggs, is that what they are? I like to pick one of them. Uh. With a hundred AJ. And, uh. And I say, thank you again to all the administrators in the de facto. Government. And, uh, we'll come back. I need my mic, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Red, my.
Thank you, Honorable, we are now getting closer to the next item on agenda. Let us take Mary, Mary, your hand is up, over to you. Mary, are you there?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, APM. Good evening, COA, good evening, our leader, good evening, love of freedom, everyone here. Yes, I just want to pick, uh, the garden egg here. For eastern region, because, uh, our APM is visiting, uh, visit us. So I want to pick, uh, the garden egg. For ten AJ, uh, ten thousand AJ, AJ. For our APM. Because you need to, when you come to people's house, you know, in our place. With the, you know, you can attend our visitor, so behalf of Iromibom. The, uh, garden egg, ten thousand AJ, and then. For our, I mean, our. I mean, for Iromibom, for your feet and, uh, ten thousand AJ. So for supporting Iromibom, that is twenty thousand AJ. Thank you very much, I mute my mic.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mary.
And, uh.
Ominkiruka, good evening, oh, thank you, good evening.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, Jack. Okay, we go to Jack. Mazie Jack, over to you. Jack. Jack Omuches, you are there, over to you. Mary, you can put down your hand, we have police here. Mary, you can put down your hand, the police yell.
Mary. You already got your tickets, please pay your tickets.
I will add five, yeah.
Five thousand AJ.
Five who? I will add two thousand AJ.
Okay. She said two thousand, she said two thousand.
All right, say it, I can hear it. You have no longer youngster.
Sorry.
All right. All right, Aunt Kedji, don't act a lantern.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll write it down for you now, two thousand.
Yes, I will, tomorrow I will send it for our information minister.
Thank you.
Mommy love, good evening.
Thank you very much.
Yes, our policeman.
Next time, be more careful, okay, dear?
Yes, I will.
Because first offense carries a small penalty. Second offense, it becomes deliberate disobedience and then the fee goes up.
It is good, I will, thank you.
All right.
Okay, Jack, are you with us? Are you having it? Over to you. There's no time to wait to do it. Jack is having issues, he's raising double hand.
That should be Jack from UK. He is oxygenated, yes, so.
Sorry, the meeting was not showing, so I couldn't mute myself. Good evening, our APN. Let me, permit to remain on, already established the protocol. I thank everybody here, my fellow citizens of Biafra. The tackle of forces gathered here today. I want to take a color notes with twenty eight Jema. But before I go, I just want to drop a food for thought for us. Shout those of us who are not supporting the freedom, who are still on defence. Imagine that when we get Biafra, in every museum in Biafra land, those of us who are slaved, suffered, donated, contributed the way or the other to make sure that this freedom, that this Biafra is gotten. And in every museum in Biafra land, our names are pictures have been placed in all of them. So that generations to come, our unborn, even when we are gone, our names, our faces, echoed across every part of Biafra land. And even the parties that will be coming across the world will come and see great men and women of Biafra who it is possible that their generation are enjoying what they are enjoying that particular time. Imagine that your picture is there, that your name is captured. This is a food for thought. Because this particular period is the period where we should all unite together and make this thing possible. We all want to go home, we all want to live in our beloved land. And that is why I will end it with this song. Everybody should have this song in mind to ask, to answer this question. Will your name, will my name, will your name is there? Will your name, will your name, will your name be there? My name, will your name, will my name be there? In the holy book of Biafra, will your name be there? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. For the wonderful contribution. We are going to go to the next.
Jack. Before you run away, the timbre, I have to talk to you.
Okay, so let us have care of Israel, over to you. I think you're the.
Well, we're catching, he's in. I will send him after him. Go and disappear.
He can run, but he can hide.
No, not in Biafranland.
There were no.
Your ID, so we can find you, you are not in the zoo. So, the earlier you clear your name, the better. Yeah, he's here, yeah. Come on, brother. Yes, so.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't know that break the rule. Okay, I will add another Jema, thank you.
Thank you.
There were no.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, let me take care of this because I don't like getting the ticket.
All right.
So, I thank you, thank you, everybody. Especially our men on ground. Like our brothers have been saying, you guys, you know, your name will be written. It's already written, actually. Because we are, nobody appointed you guys, but the Most High himself appointed you for the wonderful work you are doing. All the men, all you, all our men in the de facto governments that are going through the brunt of the whole thing. And of course, you talk about our APN and the cabinets. And then we talk about our Onyendu. The saying, you know, Asun, like he says, if you want to do something right, you do it by your own self. So, we can see the great successes that he's making now. And then we, you know, we have our Prime Minister, Simon Eba. And everyone here, of us here, who have been contributing, I would encourage you to, you know, keep the faith. You know, keep the faith, get to the end so that you get the crown. Because the end is near, as you can see. Nobody needs to tell you that we are almost at the end. The end is near. So, don't let anybody throw you out, don't anything distract you. Just keep on going. Don't want to get to, almost to the station and then you fall off. Okay, so that, I would like to take some colors. Take the garden egg and the color notes on behalf of Arizona and on behalf of Icamba. Let me take fifty eight Jema to take the color. And I'll come back later. Thank you very much. Thank you, our one. You are, you are really blessed. And of course, our APN, you are all very blessed. Thank you.
Okay, Briggy, your hand is up.
Yes, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Biafrans, there were no. There were. Madalile, there were no, eastern region. Ekelem wono. Um. Telepro Maya, De Luche. Um. Asundah, ubakorabako, ahhekorahheko. I don't know what they did with it, but he's staring at me. Yes, so. Um, Izubanga Rademma and Somar Huikiri. People, special people. And those two special people are my APN and my information minister. Those are the guys, I'm going to enjoy what I just picked with. On our way back, because somebody said it could be lie, it could be true, that APN showed up in Air Force One and I'm going to go back with him because he don't live too far from me. So, on our way back, we'll be munching on those things I picked now.
All right, well.
And it's going to cost me three thousand one hundred and fifteen thousand AJ.
Oh, my Lord.
That will have made an error, it's supposed to be AJ. But since I said the Jema instead of AJ, that's going to cost me. Now, everybody listen. Because when you take this rule, the same rule applies to you, I don't look face. Okay, so I'm going to pay a fine for that thing saying AJ instead of AJ, all right? Now, I know APN is going to talk, but they are delaying the talk and I just don't have patience to wait. Okay? Because I didn't patapatasi lazy. So, I'm going to hurry up and appreciate whatever he is going to say with another three thousand six hundred and fifteen AJ. Wow. So, that's a total of seven thousand two hundred and thirty AJ. Now, for my own error, which I'm going to pay, that will cost me, maybe, let's say, two thousand AJ for saying the wrong thing. So, now it's going to be seven thousand four hundred and thirty AJ on my tab. There were no. And I look at my hand. Because if I don't, that's another additional fine.
There were. But there were.
There were.
From you, I know what my friend is, but she can be the one to accept one. But she, she does. It would be somebody, someone else, yeah. Learn on the water, friend, just thank you.
AP, what, AP, I was thinking, I didn't hear him. APN, see, I got fined.
Okay.
Over to you, Madame Miki.
Hey, Minister Love, hey, I can't remember. All right.
Remember, Miki, remember the law is blind.
Oh, it's true.
Yeah, Biafrans.
Exactly, so no nationality at all, all right?
No man.
Okay, so that dedicate on Minister Love's predicament, yes. And then nothing less than twenty eight Jema, twenty eight Jema fine from her. Yes, Minister Love, and what do you have to say about this?
So, now my fine will be twenty eight Jema.
Yes.
All right.
All right.
No problem, but thank you for this.
There were.
Hold on, APN. Ma.
Uh, the.
Thank you.
We need to speed up the meeting.
Okay.
Your master of the item on the table. At least within next two hours or thereabout. Yeah. Been a long time picking the color. And we will continue to, those whose hands are up, we will. Color, I mean to say. When you go fundraise with the law, you do your fundraising, you pick your color. The table is to rich and, and you who is allowed. You go to the table and serve yourself as much as you can consume. But right now, we will have to bring the man of the moment to the podium. The man who has been carrying on his shoulder heavy weight of freedom. The freedom of Biafran people at the moment. Many called him, didn't the name of my doors, but I call him Niroi. Niroi one. On behalf of Rogo, and it is no other person but His Excellency, the Acting Prime Minister of Biafran Republic Government in that time. Honorable Gage Gubin. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Thank you for good work of what you are doing. I'm going to be speaking for thirty hours.
What did he say?
Twenty eight Jema. No matter how you go about it.
Mazze, oke chukum kere, omale changoke. The Biafran Republic of Metin Exa Finance Minister. Is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support for the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defence Forces and its declaration-related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who are supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support modern Africa, especially in these critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans. Let's come together and support our Prime Minister Mazze Simoni Ma who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year 2024. Freedom is coming. Mazze, oke chukum kere. Salute every Biafran specialist. Here. Okechiyo, oke chukuka ma. Oke chukuka ina yo no 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 no. Oke chukuka ma. Onyama na kiti kiti ba fulon wono. Oke chukuka ma. Well, untiti chukuka sebele. Oke chukuka ma. Okechiyo, oke chukuka ma. Mazze, oke chukum kere neke luno. Oke chukuka ma. Oke chukuka ina yo no no no. Oke chukuka ma. Oke chukuka ina yo na nyasi. Oke chukuka ma. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to great worlds. So, keep working hard and never lose who you believe in. Ayakata. Life is not easy. Sigh. Make it take and judge you. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize great team of Odwe. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize his great team, Odwe Gudjuku. I can't also forget General Philip Ephion. Okama Dalosaw. Kamche tagwa no men underground. Umoma o, kobi we. Any na foakolo. Ebon. Defacto government in homeland. Tisi anika. A special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from day one. They know him continue to flourish in your different endeavors. He says. Mazinandika, no, oh, amadike, who are no Biafra. Eka. The Prime Minister, obato biere. Okechukunkere, simokelebiyo. Okama. Okechiyo, okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo, no, 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 no. Okechukuka ma. Oyama na kiti, kiti, ba fulon, uno. Okechukuka ma. Well, untiti chukuka sebele. Okechukuka ma. Oh, okechiyo, okechukuka ma. Mama beko yo, go de sa. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo, no, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo, na, ya si. Okechukuka ma. Ayole, ayega kolole, yega rolele. Uwi wole, che tapana du ba fo. When plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know? Oyepuru chiyu, sawa, no, 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 no. Joy, joy, joy. Don't give up. When eh, it's so close, it's so close. Okechukuka ma. Never you give up, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Even your dreams, brother. Okechukuka ma. Nobody say, no, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo, no. Okechukuka ma. Never you down your blood, no, no. Okechukuka ma. Keep your head up, keep on fighting. Okechukuka ma. Oyava la, oyava la, do, do. Okechukuka ma. A big shout out to Mazze Okechukunkere. I salute you, Zipe. Mazze Simoni Ba. Life is sweet when you're patient, ah. The greatest shout out goes to the media team in Twitter. They won. Life is a process. No matter how you go about it. Masi okechukunkere, omalecha. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Minister of Information, Mazze Soni, Bravo. Thank you, you and the entire media team. We appreciate, uh, everything you are doing for the Biafra people, for your freedom. For my freedom, for all of us freedom. Remember our leader, Uduku. Accompanied by Philip Ephion. Philip Ephion once said. If the Nigerian government, if the Nigerian terrorist state, if the S Nigeria did not trade the Biafran children right. Now we will rise up. Here we go. Minister Emenike, North and South American Rep have risen up. All of us here have risen up. The Eastern Region Admins and Executive, they have all risen up. Non-SO here have risen up. All the honorable Ministers, Rep and Admin. We have all risen up. Risen up to do what? To fight for our freedom. To fight for our survivor. We are not fighting for fantasy. Rather, for us to live. Those before us, they fought like a man. They fight very hard. And without the initiative that they have taken. We're not gonna be here today. They open our eyes. They enlighten us. Our leaders before us, they educate us. And they gave us the reason why we should fight for our freedom. In Biafra land today, there is ongoing war. The Nigerian terrorist state, the S Nigeria. They have not stopped fighting the Biafra and Christians. They are planning the same goal of their father, Usman Fudo. For them to Islamize us, to take over our land, to overrun us. They are doing everything they can to achieve that their goal. The question is that we Biafrans of today, which generation of today? Are we going to allow them achieve their goal? Instead of us to come together to fight for this that we believe in. Instead of us to come to fight for what we believe in as Biafrans. Rather some are chasing shadow. Rather some are fighting us that is fighting to free our people. Rather some tell us to be their enemy. It don't matter what are the true opponents. It don't matter how much they sabotage us. That will not change the fact that we will be fighting until Biafra is free. All of our social media. Instead of some Biafrans fighting to free us, to free, for our freedom. Rather, they choose to destroy our beautiful name. They choose to destroy our personality. They choose to work with the S Nigeria and the Islamic terrorist states. It's time we unite together and fight our one common enemy. The S Nigeria, the Islamic jihadist terrorists are called them blood-sucking demons. That is who they are. A group of people or ethnic group of people that have chosen to kill innocent children, babies, mother, fathers, uncle. Behaving people like they are slaughtering animal. These people are evil and barbaric. Any country in the world that supports this evil terrorist state of Nigeria. That have planned and colluded with the Islamic jihadist terrorists and the Fulanists. To fire the children of life, the Biafran Christian. That country itself is also a terrorist. Whether it's United States of America, whether it is Russia, whether it is Israel, China. Any country that work with this terrorist state is a terrorist. It's time for countries of the world, those that believe in humanity, to practice what they preach. If you preach that you are fighting terrorism for no reason, you should support terrorism. If you condemn terrorism. Why fund terrorism indirectly? Biafra people have been killed in millions. These terrorists have made Biafra land a place where they harvest organs of Biafrans and ship to China. Another evil country called China, very evil. When the leader of the free world, United States of America. Wake up to do what is right by putting Nigeria, S Nigeria in their rightful place. The C P C, a country of particular concern, a country that kill Christian or evil state. Why United States make that bold move? Where is Russia? Russia, Russia, Russia. Why have on Russia? Speaking. Why is putting much? Rather, Russia wanna weigh in and see what US is going to do. No, no, you are enemy. Biafra people. Where is China? Have China condemned the killing? In Biafra land? Have China condemned the killing of Christians? But this same useless China. Want to come to your land? Loot everything you have. All your mineral resources. Since they want to extract it without even paying you a dime. You don't even know how they get it out of the country. India. Where is India? All this India, where they are. All these countries are not speaking. My fellow citizens, if you don't know, you have a lot of enemy. You have a lot of enemy. You are trying to escape from colonial rule. Where the Chinese are coming in with their own language to start all over. Some train in that S country called Nigeria. There are some words that are written in China. How many of you study China at school? They wanna force you back to start to study China. Before you know it, you start speaking Chakinchon Hiu. Before you know it, your daughters will be married to these people that never met with you. Before you know it, your childrens. Then we abandon your mother tongue language and start speaking unknown language. We are not saying no, we Biafrans can't do business with them. But we don't want them to come through the back door. Come through the garden front door. If you are Biafra, you wanna travel to China. You have to obtain your visa. You go through their immigration, they vet you, they check you properly. But when they come through your land. They come in freely. They control you. You even work for them. There is nothing wrong by doing business. We live in a global village. People all over the world travel around, they move around. That is the nature of humanity or humankind. That is how God designed it. But that don't mean you will leave your own God-given land to unknown territory. You wanna take over their resources, you wanna dominate them, you wanna treat them as second-class citizens. It's time we Biafrans know our enemy. Where is Qatar? They are not speaking. Where is Saudi Arabia? After the emigration of the S Nigeria. The Eastern Region, we have our own flag. Do you know Saudi, they condemn the flag they actually born in Saudi? A symbol of that will suppress you, will marginalize you, will take over your land, will Islamize you. Saudi Arabia, they don't speak. They will tell you they are more, uh, moderate Muslims. And they will use the Islamic jihadist terrorists as their food soldiers. Doing the dirty work for them. There's nothing like moderate, they all decide. Know your enemy. Align with him who align with you. Love him who love you. We played with United States of America to hasten up to do the needful. As the leader of the free world. As the police of the world. When US say let's go, the rest of the world full. For some weeks now. Please the media team, uh, we, you know, we need to do some fine touchings in this, it's very important. We don't want what happened in Afghanistan, Afghanistan, to happen in S Nigeria. We don't want United States of, State of America to come to Nigeria in the name that they want to fight the Islamic jihadist terrorists. And in result of that, we don't want them to arm the terrorist army. If they collude and arm the Nigerian military. United States of America should remember. They they are arming Boko Haram. Veteran of real integrate so-called terrorists to Nigerian military apparatus. That is exactly what the country called Nigeria have done. In Afghanistan. After United States of America trained and equipped over two hundred and something personnel, military personnel. Thousand. Not knowing that thousand, not knowing that over 90% are the same Taliban. After US withdrew, what happened? The Afghanistan army surrendered to the Taliban without putting no fight. Till today, it blow the mind of America. Till today, America is still regretting it. Because America left billions of dollars, billion not million, of equipment. And that actually is source of terrorism you see today. All this equipment, some of this equipment have landed in the hand of Boko Haram. That is a fact. Some have landed in the hand of ISIS, S WAP. All these terrorists have one common goal and one major network. They all work together. Their goal is to Islamize the whole world. Their goal is to terrorize everyone, especially where you have mineral resources like in Biafra land. Intelligent intel report from United States of America just few years ago made it clear that in the year 2030, Nigeria, we, S Nigeria will break up. We don't want to wait till 2030 before we all die. And this intelligent report made it clear that these terrorists, they're trying to make Nigeria, S Nigeria, a safe heaven. And when you say S Nigeria, where the terrorists want to have their base is in Biafra land. So they can lay their hand on these resources. And if that happen, then we attack the West. And if that happen, United States of America will be also in danger. If that happen, Europe will be in danger. So it's time, instead of United States of America to partner or to try to work with the Nigerian terrorist military, we have our B D F. They should contact the Biafra Republic government in Azad. We can work out a deal which we already propose. We can work out a deal and counter this terrorism, counter this terrorist. It's very important. Because these terrorists, they don't have the same goal with us. They don't have the same ideology. We believe in Western civilization that is built of Christianity and Judaism. What these terrorist Islamic group or religion want to do is to set us backward. If we allow them succeed, instead of us riding in our beautiful cars, Lamborghini, Maserati, Mercedes, name it, we'll go back and be riding on horses. Do you want to go back to 2000, 3000 years ago? When there is no car, no airplanes? Where people travel with camel, horses? Do you want to go back to the time of ages where there is no technology? And we talk about technology, it's not from the people that prophesize about their religion to be the best religion. It's the Christian Judaism that brought all this civilization where I can use my phone and make one, just one dial, one call. Somebody in Biafra land, the same second, we pick up and say hello, Mazi Yogi. This is what the Western civilizations have brought us. We are fighting one common enemy. This Islamic group, whether the moderate from Saudi Arabia, Qatar, Turkey, wherever. All the technology things that are making this life so adorable, beautiful today, did not emanate from them, rather from the West. Is it, we're talking about China? If the United States of America move all their companies from China, China will go down in less than a second. Just few years ago, during the administration of President Biden, the president of China visited US here. pleading with major companies like Elon Musk, he actually have meeting with over 400 businessmen and women. Pleading, pleading for United States of America businessmen and women not to pull their company out of China. The West lead. Let it be the way it is for now. You can't fight it. We are aligned ourselves with civilization. Boko Haram is against Western education. Boko Haramness. You live in Western. You enjoy everything and you don't ask yourself question, how do we get here? You have a problem. And if you don't want Biafra land to be like or look like we are, you be having the basic amenities, especially from the government of where you live. Are you comfortable with all the goodies that come with it? You don't want that in Biafra land. You are worth your generation, your family well at all. You don't deserve to live or you live with the shame. Please, I urge everybody else. This is a matter of life audit. We deserve to live. Our life is a stick. If you don't want to live, remember your children, remember your generation, remember your lineage. If you don't want to live, serve the life of the innocent women and children. Now that Biafra is trending, what are you doing? What are you bringing to the table? What impact have you made? How are you supporting this great cause? Are you supporting financially? Are you supporting by creating awareness? Can you tell we Biafrans the reason why you decide not to support your freedom? Few days ago, there is this rumor that a former criminal terrorist man, Carlos Biana, was dead. Do you know some people celebrated? Some celebrate and say, oh, this evil man finally is gone. The reason why is that he's not pure, he's evil, he don't deserve to live. You as a Biafra, do you want Biafra to celebrate you? Do you want Biafra to remember you? Just like the way we remember our leader Ojuku and Philip Efe. There is other that we supposed to remember that also fought during the war. But just because they betrayed, they sabotage our leaders there. Instead of them being in our good book, we have them in our bad book. Somebody like Hope Oza, do you think if anything happened to him today? Who will cry about it or what? Rather, who celebrate that an evil man is finally gone so he can go and rest in pieces. And all these evil people that have colluded with the terrorist S Nigeria to kill Biafrans. Even if they die and we have died. Happened that they buried them in Biafra land. When time come, we will do whatever we can. If recognition or what, so they can't even come back again. We'll make them suffer more. We'll have, we'll bury all these evil people. And name it something. We actually have a monument for them, like the one I watched you with ago. I don't know whether it's in Japan or wherever, where people go and start slapping them. Evil is not good. If you one of, if you one of those practicing evil or doing evil, disease from it. Darkness can never win light at all. Wherever there is a, what happened? The darkness disappear. All those that have been fighting us before our declaration, especially after Biafra is declared. It's time that you all come back and do what is right. Some of you, it's not your fault. Some of you, you will deceive to believe in the wrong narrative. Or maybe I'm the bad guy or Mazi Yogi Chukun is all lie, you be lied to. You will be welcome if we found out you're not part of this conspiracy of this evil people. We know those that we cannot forgive. And remember, our freedom, you are not fighting for Mazi Yogi Chukun Kiri. You are not fighting for Mazi Sun. First of all, you are fighting for your own freedom. Charity begins at home. And for those that are doing whatever they can to pull me down, what will it profit you? If you succeed? What will it profit you if you finally bring Mazi Yogi Chukun Kiri down? What next? Then you will do what I'm doing, right? Disease from evil. And for those independent medias. All those blogging just to make money. You can make money from any means, especially if you're in the media. But speak the truth, report their great news. Stop destroying, do you know? Karma is real. All you evil people on the social media destroying breathing, destroying the genuine freedom fighters, destroying them, all the honorable ministers, destroying my name. Remember, karma is real. Every thing you lay your hand, you will not prosper. Can when you do what is right? If you practice evil, you will be rewarded with evil. For all of you that are lying against us, from you to everything that come with you, all your package, sorrow, agony, every nature of it. Because these evil people, they are all transits, they are war. Hundreds and thousands of Biafrans. Yeah, evil did have misled a lot of innocent Biafrans. Some of them, whenever you see them doing this, their media propaganda with lines. If they don't talk anything evil about, Ogi Chukun Kiri is a criminal. It happened to a leader, Mazi Namdika. It happened that Mazi Namdika asked this question, you said Mazi Namdika is this? Mazi Namdika, you said, have he committed adultery with your wife? Have he stolen from you? Mazi Yogi Chukun Kiri, I don't know. Have I collected your money before? What do I do wrong to you? All I do is to fight for what I believe, Biafra. And my fellow citizens, are you are you all not seeing the result too? The truth always comes. Ngoza Rabbeze promised her gollybow once. "It's Christmas time, they will all be in Biafra land." I know in November, we are now in November, Christmas time. Her wish, but that's not how it work. Even Mazzi Simon Eba once said, "After our re-declaration, we will testify in our liberation and that the Nigerian government will come with everything they have to stop us." And it will take years. Liberation is not something that you just close your eyes, open your eyes, you will liberate the entire Biafra land. It takes time. It is just... And this evil woman went on to say she had negotiated flight from United States of America with Delta Airline. I hope that contract with Delta Airline is still valid or former is still waiting. Former and Diane will stay at the front seat because those that will stay at the front seats are somewhere, they're going to hit something. So you better know what the seat you choose. Those that will stay at the front seat are the cabinet members. Ngoza Rabbeze will stay at the pulpit with the pilot. Actually, she will be the one piloting this one. She must let her to fly. So Ona Abou, Yabrou the first. And Diane will be the co-pilot of Abu. Solomon Unkoshai, better come back. I heard you running. Where are you going? Come back here. Onyami, Kerebe no, Onyami na Georgia. When I called this man, called Onyami, trying to educate him a little bit, I said, "Be careful." Try to talk to this man with good faith. He among one of those I call. I call Onyami, I called the one they call Go247. Who else again I tried to contact? Ogodama. I didn't know. Onyami recorded me and send it to Go247. Go247 use it and do program. "Who go to 47? Where are you now?" "How about us?" These people, they will be at the front of that airline. I will make sure the airline will be the one that will be able to take all of them at once. No going and come back. Because if that airline land in S Nigeria, we already know what will happen. They will not come back again. And being so evil, this evil woman said they are negotiating flight from Europe. Is it KLM? Air France. The one in Europe, I don't know if they will finalize it or not. If it is a woman that love Biafra, she will also negotiate flight from Middle East because we have some honorables from over there. Those that live in North Korea, South Korea, that means they are not part of those going back home. So they will go in the second or third bus. I remember. You know, when you're speaking the truth, you're doing what is right, you can sleep and sleep peacefully, wake up knowing that you owe no one. You will not be paranoid like somebody who commit a crime. You know, if you commit a crime against the state and maybe you are under warrant, the government is looking for you. If there is any law enforcement behind you, you will freak out thinking they coming after you because you know you have a question to answer. But if your heart is pure, you are speaking the truth, you are doing what is right, just like our leader Mazinamdekan said. We are white and whiter than snow, meaning that you have to be pure. I believe and I know I'm pure. And I believe majority of us here are pure. Keep the good work. You will be rewarded with blessing. But for the evil one, they always katar. The evil ones will suspend you, that is depending you do. They still have a sleepless night. They say, "No, this suspension is not enough." They will say they aspire on you, that aspire is still not enough. They can't still sleep at night because their evil is tormenting them. Then they will wake up and turn around with emergency meeting and say, "Let us punish him who have the best point on earth." Let's... that's up here. Let us punish him because they are evil. And the question is that, what? This man, Kama Aziyokechukunkire, what have I done wrong? They don't have answer for that. I appreciate the admin right from Eastern Region. Keep doing the good work. Biafra is here. No matter what happened few days ago, yesterday, those that try to disrupt this beautiful country today. People prevail. People that they have and in our midst three day. Their jealousness, they can't. For the past few months, we have achieved a lot. And those that call themselves freedom fighters that are fighting for Bia... because of Biafra, they can't even tweet or post our achievements with all these beautiful men and women, Congress of the United States of America. They can't even post it because they are so ashamed of themselves. When we went for our because they are not fighting for Biafra, they can't even post it, talk about it. We have one of our own recently that have been a strong ally advocating for Biafra, Mr. Gunther. Some of these they have disappointed themselves. Are so angry that Gunther is working with the light, with the people of light, that Gunther align himself with Biafra Republic government in Ezra. And they forgot that Gunther is different. And they know how to make their findings, which he did. And he found out the government that is piloting the affair of Biafra people. If you have not aligned with these great men and women that are doing the right thing, kindly do that. Biafra Republic government in Ezra still remain in the legitimate government that will take us to our fine place. We need you. We love you. Be part of this wonderful family. Hurry up so we can all do what is right. Before it's too late. After United States of America, the leader of the Free World Pronouns that they are coming to Nigeria, the S Nigeria to deal with this bloodsucking terrorists, you have seen that the terrorist state of Niger because that is what they are known for. These terrorists believe in what they are doing. They are they are religion top them, that is a holy war. I don't know what make it holy. When they keep killing Biafran Christians, even the Nigerian Christians because the middle belt are still Christians, over 90%. And we Christians all over the world, we love ourselves. We are all brother in Christ Jesus. Please, we played with every Biafran. This government that was shut down recently, the United States of America, that was shut down for some time, have reopened. And remember, when the government of America shut down is the government of the whole world I'm talking about. Because the decisions made from Capitol Hill, it affect the whole world. They have been a little bit slow in process of our freedom because of that. But we have meetings, meetings, line up very soon. Obokonan News, very soon. Very soon. We'll see the result as usual. We have meetings lined up. Especially now that Nigeria is designated as country of every member of Congress or legislature and then to is you know, when we used to confront embarrassed country, country where a terrorist is the leader, country that supply arms to terrorists, to terrorize the citizen. What an evil country. Country that cannot accept when they wrong and then made a madman. Shit hole country. Before I became the acting prime minister, everyone last year, last two years, I always said it. If I have the opportunity, if I have what it takes, I will burn that this zoo S Nigeria, I will burn it. If it's only one person that survived, so be it. Whoever want to go down in S Nigeria, who burn everything down. We'll start all over. Chukoki Kea Biamawa, God in heaven, according to the holy book, he made me to understand that Allenua and his family and the animals there, so that I don't want to listen. When and God has to support Noah in building the Noah ark, the shithole grave in Noah survived the flood. And what about Sudan and the more ah, the same thing we repeat in Nigeria. Any Biafra that decide to be a one Nigeria, that Biafra will go down with the scene of that Nigeria. Only how you will survive is to run away, to escape, to maybe shit hole shameful disgrace country called Nigeria. Look at what happened in same country called Nigeria. Open fire on innocent civilians. Even these innocent civilians are waving the flag of that dirty, useless country called Nigeria. Not this flag, they are waving that they are green and white flag, an evil flag. They are still gone down by Nigerian military. Support your freedom with passion, joy. Knowing that your family, your children, your generation will have been brutalized. Yesterday what time to what time? Exactly that time, the light went off. When they said that we turn the light back on, they turn it back on. Something like that cannot happen in that shithole country called Nigeria. You don't even know when they take the light and when they will bring it back. Sometimes they take the light for hours, for days, for weeks, for months, for years. Teachers will go on strike forever. The whole system was several most. Sometimes people will work for a whole year without being paid. What a shit hole country without seaweed system, country without no electricity, good infrastructure, country that think country where when our kids graduate, they can't find a job. Tell me what to do? Joy. Those of you that believe in Nigeria, what joy? Said Nigeria breach criminals because he is a criminal as well. I know because of time and our Biafrans from homeland, we know what they are going through. Some of them are using their power bank. Some don't have light. Some don't have light. You know, I feel so, so sorry that, you know, I'm even feeling guilty that some have tuning for past two, three, four, five hours. Sometime we even wonder, how do they keep up with that no light? How do they charge their food? A darkness country. This is what they brought to us for over a hundred years, and we want to put a stop to it. My fellow citizens from the eastern region of Biafran land, this is exactly what we are fighting for, so we can have a full study life, the basic amenities, things that will make us live and live better and want to live. We appreciate the fight that you all have put on from homeland. Please, keep doing the homework. Keep doing evangelism. When I say evangelism, I didn't say go from house to house like you are witness. You can do it in workplace, in marketplace. You can talk to neighbors, those that you know that will not betray, but there's too many sabotages every week. Talk to your fellow citizens that Biafran is here. Biafran is here. Send message to Tunubu, Chatiman, who will destroy them from Washington this year. This is just the beginning. Can you imagine a shit hole country called Nigeria? They even have ambassador in Washington. For years. Did I even have a lobby? A disgrace country. Thank you, my fellow citizens. I know I've spoken for quite some time now because I don't know why no one is keeping the time for me. I'm sorry if I, you know, if I take too much time. Keep supporting your freedom. Our freedom is here. And for few weeks now, Biafran is trending. And in Europe, we are making things happen. Our allies and those that believe in what we are doing, just like Gunther. You know, there's a lot going on behind the scene and it will soon manifest, just as usual. We don't, we have passed the time that we also want to remind the Nigerian terrorist states, they will our leader Mazinamdekan did not commit crime. The Nigerian terrorist state commit crime against Mazinamdekan. If any thing happen in the Biafran people, not going to be able to do, we are running out of patience. No one have monopoly of violence. No one have monopoly of taking anyone life. Not like Dankote, that fool that Nigeria gave all the whole major businesses to operate and make him richer than eBay to another. Nobody have monopoly. All these Fulani that look like bunga fish, tattered, dirty pigs, they don't look better than us one. They are not more educated than us two. You can't compare life with darkness. Just that, my people need to rise up. Please, if you know, you can support financially Honorable Minister of Information. Can liberate our land he require most our children, family members.